Before we begin tonight, we're going to take a moment to acknowledge the passing of Mr. Jack O'Brien, brother of Councilor Thomas O'Brien. I don't know if there's anything you would like to say at this time?
Oh, he went to MacIntosh High School. He had a blue mask and a sand mask, and he's a horrible guy.
A moment of thought. Thank you. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I'll ask the clerk to call the roll, please.
Roll call for the meeting on August 19, 2019. Counselor Tonto.
Present.
Counselor Vogel.
Present.
Counselor Zee.
Here.
Counselor Devlin.
Here.
Counselor Earl.
Present.
Counselor Agaman.
Here.
Counselor Juntah.
Present.
Counselor Khan.
Present.
Counselor O'Brien.
Present.
Counselor Shan.
Present.
Counselor Khan.
Present.
All present at Khan's.
Good, are there any late filed items?
There are no late filed items.
Very well. Public comments.
Are you first?
Yes. Step right up here.
I'm John Spellman, a member of the St. Vincent de Paul Society of MacIntosh Parish. We're having our annual fundraiser on September 28th, the Walk for the Poor, and we've asked for permission to conduct that walk through the city. It's entirely on sidewalks and not crossing any major thoroughfares. I think all the papers have been submitted for, or in July. And the purpose of this organization is to help individuals in emergency, crisis, financial situations for food, rent, utility bills, medical expenses, things like that. And so I hope it'll be acted on favorably. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I can't read the first name, but the last name looks like McPherson. The purpose of this organization is to help individuals in emergency, crisis, financial situations for food, rent, utility bills, medical expenses, things like that. And so I hope it'll be acted on favorably. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I can't read the first name, but the last name looks like McPherson. Ms. McPherson?
Yeah.
That definitely is. Come to the microphone, please.
I'm not sure what I'm supposed to be doing here.
Well, did you want to speak in favor or opposed to something on the agenda tonight?
Yes.
Good.
I was the curator from the beginning when we first had this building. And we were given the artifacts from the Marine Society.
Yes.
We had holes in the windows. We had water coming through the floor. I'm not a preservationist, but I can tell you that the Pem helped us with our building. And to be certified, we need climate control, and this is what this is all about. The $75,000 will be for climate control in the attic. It does get very hot up there. There's no water coming in now, but it's very, very important for certification and future grants. And I had trouble actually getting loans from other museums because they came over and saw our attic and how we store things. So I plead with you for the $75,000 to do our attic, our building, and climate control. It's important to a museum.
Within the Community Preservation Act?
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you. Bill Harris.
Good evening. I live at 56 Lime Street. I'm also here to support the $75,000 preservation grant. The Maritime Museum asked for $100,000. CPC recommended $75,000. It'll probably be $1 million to do the whole thing. And so this is going to be way less than even 10%. But it's very important for the city to participate because if it doesn't, the institutions with real money, like the Institute of Library and Museum Services in Washington, probably won't give anything, and they give large grants. So I gave each of you probably more than you want to know about three preservation restrictions that cover this building. A former member of the Newburyport Preservation Trust looked at the recorded documents at the Registry of Deed and didn't know that because this is under the land court, two of the three preservation restrictions won't show up under the recorded documents. So I gave you the preservation restriction with the city, which covered the Maritime Society's less sea or any future owner. So they are covered in perpetuity. I gave you reference to the state preservation restriction of 2013, which takes precedent over the city one. But normally, the Mass Historical will ask the city to take a look first if there's an issue. And they'll only intervene if they need to, but they have priority in terms of the ultimate decision if there's a conflict between the city and the state. And I gave you reference to the, there's a preservation restriction that was done by the Newburyport Historical Society because it took over the Newburyport Marine Society collection that they collected since the 1770s. They loaned and/or gave important artifacts that were collected by ship captains around the world. And that covers the artifacts in the museum. And the two other restrictions allow, cover exterior and interior aspects of the building. It covers the masonry, the mortar, the materials, the windows, et cetera. So if someone wants to add another preservation restriction for the facade, in my opinion, it adds nothing. But if that's what it takes to get support of the city council, go add a fourth preservation restriction. If you need anything else, I'm happy to provide it, but for now, that's all I'll say. Thank you.
Thank you. Megan St. John.
My name's Megan St. John. I live on Basin Street on Plum Island. I'm here about the defibrillators on Plum Island, and I have some great news to share. We have just learned that Mayor Holliday has approved the installation of our AED out there, and I wanted to take a moment to thank you. I think you may recall that we were here in June and presented our ideas to the council at that point. And we have, over the last year, worked as a citizens group to raise the funds in order to purchase and install these AEDs and gift them to the city. So with the mayor's approval now, we are so happy to know that we will have two AEDs on the island, one at the center and one now at Plum Island Point. So I'm here to thank everyone who was a part of this and making this happen at Plum Island Point, certainly Mayor Holliday, Chief Leclerc, the Public Safety Committee, the entire city council, and especially for me, my own counselor, Sharif Seed, who was an invaluable support through this and gave us some excellent advice. I also want to thank my two colleagues, Peggy Poppy and Lynn Mather, who were really the leaders behind this, as well as all of our donors and supporters. So thank you. Thank you very much. It means a lot to have this level of public safety on Plum Island. And we hope that we can have a little celebration with all of you once we've installed it and really launched it.
Try my best.
So I just wanted to take a moment to say thank you very much.
Thank you. Shocking. Doug Muir.
Thank you. I too am here on behalf of the Custom House Maritime Museum and its application for a grant from CPC. I want to make a couple of points, hope I don't reiterate too much what Bill has ably said, but the amount of the grant recommended by the CPC, $75,000, is 10% roughly of the project budget as presented to the CPC, and probably, as also Bill said, a lot less than the project will cost. However, we need some support from the city in order to get grants from other sources. If grantmakers feel that the city doesn't care, we won't get those grants, and the project won't go forward. Now, the project, the capital improvement project, including the air conditioning, the climate control, is something we committed to when we took title to the building. That was one commitment. The other commitment was free admission to Newburyport residents for life. That we've implemented. So we'd like to implement the second of our commitments to the city when we took title. We'd like your support to do that. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing that there are no more individuals here to make comments to the council, it's time for the mayor's comment. Mayor Holliday?
I'm Mr. Councilmember of the public here and watching from home. Couple updates, the Newburyport Redevelopment Authority wanted to give you an update on where the House bill, H3698, is, our home petition to dissolve the NRA. State Representative Ted Speliotis, who is the chair of the House Committee on Bills in the third reading, toured the NRA and Central Waterfront with us on July 23rd to gain a better understanding of the city's desire to dissolve the NRA, and was very supportive at that time of our approach. And this was followed up by a few clarifying questions on the home petition from the committee and council. So that's where we are at this point. So I think it's been well vetted, and we're waiting for that third reading. From there, it's engrossed and then signed by the governor, so I will keep you updated on that. I think the information on the reduction in parking is, has been out there thanks to the Daily News, our website, and informing people about what the plans are going forward. You may recall that the planning board, upon issuing the permit for our parking garage, with it came a reduction in 100, 125 parking spaces on the waterfront and a traffic study. In order to do a true traffic study about the impact of the garage and not having all the parking on the central waterfront, we need to reduce the parking before we do the parking study. The map is there, it's posted online, there are some FAQ's that are there also, and there is a Parking Advisory Committee meeting scheduled for the 22nd, X6 PM, to discuss the parking reductions, permits, and snow emergency parking. Economic and Environmental Affairs, you may know that there is a new Secretary of Economic and Environmental Affairs, Kathleen Theoharides, who met with the Mass Municipal Mayor's on 7/24 to provide an overview of the different EEA initiatives. And then later in the day, she came out to Salisbury and really focused more on regional initiatives, talked about the municipal vulnerabilities prepared in this program, introduced the new coordinator, Karen Ruston. As I think most of you know, at this juncture, we were not awarded the MVP grant, and we had a follow-up conversation with the reviewers, and $26 million worth of grants were submitted, and only 12 were funded, $12 million, and they really liked our proposal and encouraged us to resubmit, so we will be doing that. The Environmental Bond Bill has also recently been passed. As you know, we have earmarks for Plum Island and the cleanup of the PCPs and the rail trail. So we're working with our legislators about how to move that process, those funds, out of the Environmental Bond Bill, to begin working on completing the rail trail and also for more funding to protect Plum Island. DPS, the roof bids came in. I know this has been a process we've been talking about for a while, but Wayne Roofing was awarded the contract for $694,000. They came in below the estimate of $726,500. They have a meeting this week to receive a notice to proceed, and they will begin with the library and the fire department because the solar panels on the DPS building have to be removed before they can do work on that roof. High Street, thank you all for your patience, but we were not able until, and thank you, Barry, for clarifying that in the Newburyport comments about, or whatever blog it was, about why we couldn't pave like the week after we, or striped after the week after we paved, things had to settle. Paving starts next week. It will be the line striping, the yellow line down the middle of the road, not where it currently is. That was for construction. And the bike lanes and crosswalks will also be reinstalled. We have bids going out for two water main replacement projects, one at Malcolm Hoyt, which needs to happen before we begin to do that major drainage project, and Columbus Ave. Columbus Ave, most of the national grid work has been done, and now the next phase is the water main, and then in the spring, we'll be able to pave that road. I know the residents here have waited a long time for all the utility work and paving to happen. The Spofford Street sidewalk is ready to go forward. Also, they'll begin removing trees. They've talked to all the residents out there. They've had no issues with anyone being concerned about removing of trees to be able to install the sidewalk there. Brush will also begin being removed next week. Allied Sidewalk, who's doing the sidewalks on Merrimack Street, will also be doing the sidewalks on Spofford. As a result of a really thorough walkthrough of Merrimack Street and the plans to pave from the roundabout to Ken Street, it became clear that there was a lot more sidewalk work that needed to happen there on Merrimack Street, and that we could not coordinate paving the season and doing the amount of sidewalk work. So the plan right now is to do not every sidewalk on Merrimack Street, but those that are in, you know, really rough shape, concrete with concrete, brick with brick, or people can upgrade to brick if they want, as you know. So the sidewalk work will happen during the rest of this construction season. We'll do a skim coat on Merrimack so it's at least more passable for the winter, and then they will come back, mill grind, and pave in the spring. That's a little bit different than we had originally set, but I think it makes sense because they can't be digging up a road to put in sidewalks, so they'll do the sidewalks first. Pleasant Street, also, the sidewalks will be done from Titcombe to Market Street, as well as paving that street. Plumber Springs Bridge, we submitted a letter of support for West Newbury. They are a smaller community, so they have a different Mass Works grant that they apply for. We submitted a level of support for their application, and there is a public hearing being held or scheduled in West Newbury for the 23rd. I will let you know more details once that is finalized. They are very aware that Plumber Springs is way down on our priority list in terms of capital needs. In fact, being out at the Borough Lobster Fest out on Middle Street during this past Saturday, you had to go around. Everybody who lived out there doesn't want the bridge open. They really like the quiet and not having to deal with trucks. Anyway, we're going to have to deal with this at some point, but West Newbury is very aware that it's not high on our list. This week, Wednesday, we are going into Mass DOT District 1 office in Arlington. The Mass DOT had Howard Stein and Hudson, who completed a fairly comprehensive study. We have a little bit of differences of opinion on the data they used for accident data around the circle, but we're sort of working through that. But we're going to be reviewing that study and the three plans that they have in place for changes to the rotary. We also, and not that we're thrilled with any one of them, but we'll see where we come out on the other end, and we'll certainly relay what the plans from Mass DOT are. We, obviously, our highest priorities are pedestrian, safety, getting people across to the train station, and people onto the rail trail, and those are our real priorities. And that's what we will be putting forward. The other thing we want to talk to Mass DOT about is the possibility of using some of their land near their station for staging during the construction of the fire station, and potentially some longer-term parking on site. Complete Streets, we found out last week that our application for Merrimack Street and Lower Atkinson was not funded. Jordy was on vacation last week. He will follow up with the reviewer. And again, I'm not sure if it was more applications than money, not sure at this point, so we will get a little more information on why that wasn't funded, and hopefully, we will be resubmitting that. Community Preservation Committee, I would like to extend my thanks to Mike Dissette as chair of the CPC and the committee members for their review and due diligence of all the projects that were submitted this year. The 10 funded projects, sorry, there's a typo there, were well-vetted, and I encourage your favorable review. I also strongly encourage, as you've heard tonight from others, to support the Custom House. This is one of the most significant historic buildings in our community with really, you know, invaluable, priceless archives that we've been concerned about for years in terms of protecting. You know, this is some seed money that can help them finally move forward in terms of the climate control that they need in this building. I'm also really happy to report in the FY '20 budget, state budget this year, the plan the governor had for raising fees at the registry to increase funding to community preservation communities has happened. It's in the budget. It really won't be fully realized till next budget, but that's an additional $36 million for CPC communities, which is really good news, because once Boston approved becoming a PCP community, the pool was diminishing very quickly. And Brown School, would like to thank Counselor Zee for his revised overlay district, which is an improvement over the original overlay district in regards to the Low Street property. As you may recall, the TR-1 signatures had to happen first for the property to be released to DCAM. That has happened today, started the state polling that goes for two weeks. That's where state, any state agency who might have an interest in this building would come forward to DCAM by September 3rd. Right after September 3rd, they will do the local polling, which is for municipalities. That's where we come in in terms of the property. At the same time, DCAM is preparing the project notification form to the Historic Commission. That's usually a turnaround of 30 days. And they're also in the process of preparing the scope of services for the appraisal on site. And as I think you are aware, that I am not willing to move forward to begin the feasibility study till we have a sense of what the appraisal is on this property, because that could change everything. So hopefully, we will have that information sometime in the coming year. So things, it's been a long, slow process, but it is moving forward. Very excited about Paulina Schwartz, who has been doing some sustainability work with Molly and her team, who is a fellow at the Institute for Sustainable Energy at BU. And she brought other professors to the table. We had a conference call, and they are very interested in working with us on collecting data and helping us organize the environmental health and economic impact of CSOs. And I just also wanted to congratulate the Merrimack River Voyagers, who kayaked 117 miles from Franklin, New Hampshire, to the point, and to Barry and Charlie, who we put in in April, and 14 miles was still long enough in terms of getting out to.
I thought it was 140 miles.
Well, at least they put me in tandem, so I had it a little easier after halfway. So anyway, congratulations. I think it really did raise awareness about what's going on in the river. Do Nourishment, our project that we delayed in April because of plumbers and the difficulties we're having in terms of monitors, et cetera, will begin on or around September 9th. Residents have collected $15,000 for sand, coupled with the Charles Brothers sand. We should have sufficient sand. In terms of DCR, Daryl Fragoni is helping us in the engineering components of that, so they are, and he'll be out there during the nourishment. And we're also using a new system, it's a conveyor belt, sort of like a cement truck that dumps sand, which ends up cutting off probably at least three to four, maybe longer weeks of this project, and so we will be completing it much more quickly. So I'm very pleased about that. I also would be remiss if I didn't take a moment to thank Counselor Earl's for your many years of service. I can't tell you what an honor it was serving as a city council with you, but also when you served as my ward counselor. And it's been a pleasure having you on the council as I've been serving as mayor. I appreciate all the efforts that you have done in the city. You will be missed, and I hope you enjoy your new home over the border.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for everything that you have done for our city.
Thank you very much. Questions for the mayor?
Thank you.
Thank you, mayor. I guess we'll move on to the consent agenda.
Class act. Consent agenda this evening is the approval of the minutes for July 15th. There are no transfers. There are two communications. Communication 174, Block Party on Otis Place, 9/21, has to go to Public Safety. And the Walk for the Poor on 9/28, that's also to go to Public Safety. There's one appointment, Appointment 116, Barry McBride of 5 Pine Street, Salisbury, as the Assistant Wiring Inspector until 5/1, 2020. Following items are removed from their respective committees when the motion approved, the consent agenda is voted on. Budget finance, three items, Order 128, 132, and Appointment 114. Public Safety, Communication 144, 145, 146, 147, 150, 162, and 164A, and Order 133. With those items and the matters that I had mentioned above, that's the consent agenda this evening.
Motion to approve, second. Moved and seconded, discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor, Counselor O'Brien?
The appointment Barry McBride, isn't that a reappointment?
No, I think this is a first-time appointment, isn't it?
Boy, he's here for many years. I know the title's been, but I thought he was.
Was he working as assistant wiring inspector?
What does the letter say?
Reappointed.
Is it a reappointment? That's what the. It should be listed as a reappointment. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you for the correction, Counselor.
Yeah.
Motion to approve as amended. Second. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Consent agenda is done, so, Mr. Spellman? You're all set. And we're into the regular agenda. What we'd like to do with the mayor's update.
Motion to receive and file.
Second. Moved and seconded, discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Communications.
First communication is 176, the memo regarding the Brown School zoning submitted by Counselor Zee.
Motion to refer to Planning and Development. Second. Moved and seconded, discussion. Counselor Zee.
Just very briefly, my intent is not to talk about the content. I just, I'm writing this to you as an update. This zoning amendment was first proposed back in May. As outlined, you know, that's actually the latest in a long string of events on the Brown School. And I said to myself when I proposed it that I'd go out of my way to be as open about it as possible, and I just want my colleagues to know that it's starting to feel like the waterfront ad hoc for me. I'm in the, you know, in the living rooms, I'm at the dining rooms, I'm going to meetings for various stakeholders, and there are really three, and obviously, this body is a stakeholder. So I'm just notifying you that I would like to vote on this on September 30th, and I didn't want to have any surprise or unknowns. It's still a very active process, and my understanding in communicating with the chairs is probably going to be at least one, two, maybe more committee meetings between now and that date. And would encourage you, if you're interested, to come to those meetings and engage with me as a sponsor on any of the, any of the things you have, take issue with or that you like, and, or you can contact me directly, obviously, within the confines of open meetings. So that's, that's all there is to it, and with that, send it off to Planning and Development for, you know, for their consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Further discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Okay. Communication 177, I believe.
177 has a cover letter. It also has attached agreements, credit purchase and sale agreements on solar alternatives.
Motion to refer to Public Utilities. Second. Moved and seconded, discussion. Counselor Zee, again.
Very quick, this is going to come and go in Public Utilities. This is the same contract that we just spent a lot of time on, but it's two new solar opportunities. So just so you know, when it comes back out, early September, the speed.
Thank you. Further discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? I guess there are no appointments in the second reading. We're into orders. We're into orders.
Orders. First order, 134, submitted by Councilor Agaman. Important in part, it adds for employee permits, Hales Court Lot, Tickham Street Garage. Also, it states certain things that I don't think I need to read into the record right now. Downtown employee pay per is valid only in designated spaces for all-day parking facilities. And.
Okay. What is the will of the council?
Motion to refer to public safety.
Second. Moved and seconded to public safety. Discussion. Councilor Agaman.
Yeah, just one point at the, at the very bottom of the ordinance. It puts into writing what's already our policy, which is that resident permits, annual permits don't, are not valid in the garage. But I want to make clear, you know, that's up to debate. The whole program's up for debate. So I expect that to be something we think about. Thanks.
Thank you. Further discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, Councilors. Order 135.
Order 135, in essence, is requesting a vote by the city council to allow us to use, not for the preliminary election September 17th, but for the final election in the first week of November, new image cast machines. We now have AccuVote machines. And there's certain statutes, Chapter 54, Section 34, that requires the city council to actually take a vote telling the clerk that he can use a certain type of voting machine and disuse another one. And that's what this says.
Motion to refer to general government.
Second. Is there a second? It was second, I believe, was Councilor Jenta. Discussion. I think the clerk described it adequately. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Very well. Order 136.
Order 136 is a bond order, loan order. Upon the recommendation of the CPC, $694,820 is appropriated to pay the cost of the continuation of Phase 2 of the Fuller Athletic Facility renovation project, including the installation of 500 to 1,000-person grandstand, completion of electrical connections, installation of new sound system, renovation of the interior of the existing fieldhouse to include restroom facilities, et cetera. And the rest is boilerplate. Submitted, Councilor Tontar.
Motion to refer to Budget and Finance.
Moved and seconded by Councilor Zee. Discussion, Councilor Tontar.
Yeah, just a word on this. We have this in the community preservation appropriations. However, we're not bringing that out tonight because the loan council asked that we take out the limit of $55,000 in debt service for this loan. Community Preservation Committee will be meeting later this week or next week? Next week, to consider that change in language and resubmit it. However, this loan order will come into Budget and Finance, which will enable us to act on it if two things happen. Well, three, actually. If community preservation committee recommends it. Secondly, if we bring it before the council and pass it. But we wanted to get this loan order in front of us now, so we could facilitate in terms of timing the loan order if all those other things fall into place.
Further discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, it's referred. And Order 137.
Order 137 is a parking order. The operative change is on the third line, employee permit, quarterly, changes from 40 to 50 to reflect the suggestion that a garage would be included in the previous order. Other than that, essentially the same. Submitted, Councilor Agaman.
Motion to refer to public safety.
Second. Moved and seconded to public safety. Discussion, Councilor Agaman.
Yeah, obviously, this is a companion to the other one. There are two other things that I want to highlight. So first, there's the concept that, as the clerk said, that the quarterly permit for employees should go up to 50 bucks because you're getting the garage and it's snow-covered. The other is, we discovered kind of accidentally that there was a $3 surcharge on the annual resident, and rather than surprise people with that, at the suggestion of the clerk, I just added it to the 15. So again, we'll, we'll work that out. If we could get rid of the $3 surcharge, great. And then finally, I'll observe, there's still in here the resident monthly pass, which, as I said, is up for debate altogether. Thank you.
Is there further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's referred. Public Safety. Ordinances.
First ordinance is Ordinance 30. It's the downtown overlay district. At second reading, last meeting, July 15th, it was tabled.
Motion removed from the table.
Second. Motion removed from the table. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's off the table.
Motion approved on second reading.
Second. Moved and seconded by Councilor Jenta. Discussion. Councilor Agaman.
Yeah, very quickly, this passed on first reading. Two of the councilors that voted in favor were absent last time. So I'm hopeful that we can get it through tonight. I want to emphasize, this is only downtown. Repeat, this is only downtown. It does not affect any neighborhood other than downtown.
Further discussion. Hearing none. We'll take a roll call on this matter. It will need eight votes for passage.
This is a roll call on Ordinance 30, second reading. Councilor Tontar.
Yes.
Councilor Vogel.
Yes.
Councilor Zee.
No.
Councilor Devlin.
Yes.
Councilor Earls.
Yes.
Councilor Agaman.
Yes.
Councilor Jenta.
Yes.
Councilor Khan.
Yes.
Councilor O'Brien.
Yes.
Councilor Shan.
Yes.
Councilor Connell.
Yes.
Needing eight, receiving 10. Motion passes second reading.
Thank you, Councilors. Ordinance 28.
Ordinance 28 is a second reading of parks and recreation fees, which is right here.
Motion to approve on second reading.
Thank you.
Was there a second?
Yes.
Councilor Jenta, thank you. Discussion. Hearing none. Being second reading, we'll take a roll call vote on this matter.
It's a roll call for Ordinance 28, municipal code regarding parks and recreation. Councilor Tontar.
Yes.
Councilor Vogel.
Yes.
Councilor Zee.
Yes.
Councilor Devlin.
Yes.
Councilor Earls.
Yes.
Councilor Agaman.
Yes.
Councilor Jenta.
Yes.
Councilor Khan.
Yes.
Councilor O'Brien.
Yes.
Councilor Shan.
Yes.
Councilor Connell.
Yes.
I guess that passes.
Motion passes second reading.
Ordinance 39, please.
Ordinance 39, I.
I apologize. 36, I skipped one. 36. 36. The planning board ZBA meeting.
Recording of Planning Board and ZBA meeting, second reading.
Motion to approve on second reading?
Second.
Motion to approve on second reading, that would be Ordinance 36.
Discussion of this motion.
Was that your second?
Hearing none. We'll take a roll call on this matter.
Roll call, Ordinance 39. Councilor Tontar.
Yes.
Councilor Vogel.
Yes.
Councilor Zee.
Yes.
Councilor Devlin.
Yes.
Councilor Earls.
Yes.
Councilor Agaman.
Yes.
Councilor Jenta.
Yes.
Councilor Khan.
Yes.
Councilor O'Brien.
Yes.
Councilor Shan.
Yes.
Councilor Connell.
Yes.
It's 36, right, not 39?
Yeah, it was 36.
That was 36.
39.
39 is the ordinance to amend the salary of elected officials. There, I should apologize on that. That I announced proudly last meeting. It passed. It did not pass. It needs eight by statute. That's why it's back before you. It received seven.
So the judgment was that it was passed? In fact, that was an error, so it's before us again for a confirmatory vote. Point of order, if I may. Councilor Vogel.
Was it short because of attendance?
Councilor Vogel.
Yeah. Was it short because of attendance at the meeting? Or was it?
Short because it received seven yes votes. It needs eight yes votes.
Motion to table?
Second. Is the, a motion to table?
It's the first night. It's new, isn't it?
Yeah, I mean, one could debate that it's not new. It's the exact same. It's a resubmission, but it might be cleaner if it is not voted on tonight.
Oh, we could.
I will say that the clerk and I discussed this and thought that the confirmation was necessary.
Or Budget Finance.
It made more sense to bring it before the council and see what you wanted to do with it. If you want to table it, that's fine. Give it some thought.
It's already done.
If you don't, we can.
It's already been tabled and seconded.
Tabled and seconded.
It's done. Was the motion to table seconded? I did not hear a second.
It was seconded.
Didn't hear it, Joe. All right, thank you. Okay. Not a matter for discussion. All those in favor of tabling this item, say yes. Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Nay. The chair's in doubt. Roll call, please.
It's a roll call on the motion to table, Ordinance 39. Councilor Tontar.
No.
Councilor Vogel.
No.
Councilor Zee.
Yes.
Councilor Devlin.
Yes.
Councilor Earls.
Yes.
Councilor Agaman.
Present.
Councilor Jenta.
Yes.
Councilor Khan.
No.
Councilor O'Brien.
Yes.
Councilor Shan.
Yes.
Councilor Connell.
Yes.
I guess that passes.
Motion passes second reading.
Ordinance 39, please.
Ordinance 39, I.
I apologize. 36, I skipped one. 36. 36. The planning board ZBA meeting.
Recording of Planning Board and ZBA meeting, second reading.
Motion to approve on second reading?
Second.
Motion to approve on second reading, that would be Ordinance 36.
Discussion of this motion.
Was that your second?
Hearing none. We'll take a roll call on this matter.
Roll call, Ordinance 39. Councilor Tontar.
Yes.
Councilor Vogel.
Yes.
Councilor Zee.
Yes.
Councilor Devlin.
Yes.
Councilor Earls.
Yes.
Councilor Agaman.
Present.
Councilor Jenta.
Yes.
Councilor Khan.
Yes.
It's 36, right, not 39?
Yeah, it was 36.
That's 36.
That was 36.
39.
39 is the ordinance to amend the salary of elected officials. There, I should apologize on that. That I announced proudly last meeting. It passed. It did not pass. It needs eight by statute. That's why it's back before you. It received seven.
So the judgment was that it was passed? In fact, that was an error, so it's before us again for a confirmatory vote. Point of order, if I may. Councilor Vogel.
Was it short because of attendance?
Councilor Vogel.
Yeah. Was it short because of attendance at the meeting? Or was it?
Short because it received seven yes votes. It needs eight yes votes.
Motion to table?
Second. Is the, a motion to table?
It's the first night. It's new, isn't it?
Yeah, I mean, one could debate that it's not new. It's the exact same. It's a resubmission, but it might be cleaner if it is not voted on tonight.
Oh, we could.
I will say that the clerk and I discussed this and thought that the confirmation was necessary.
Or Budget Finance.
And that it made more sense to bring it before the council and see what you wanted to do with it. If you want to table it, that's fine. Give it some thought.
It's already done.
If you don't, we can.
It's already been tabled and seconded.
Tabled and seconded.
No discussion. It's done. Was the motion to table seconded? I did not hear a second.
It was seconded.
Didn't hear it, Joe. All right, thank you. Okay. Not a matter for discussion. All those in favor of tabling this item, say yes. Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Nay. The chair's in doubt. Roll call, please.
It's a roll call on the motion to table, Ordinance 39. Councilor Tontar.
No.
Councilor Vogel.
No.
Councilor Zee.
Yes.
That... So, appropriation number one is the Newburyport High School exterior woodwork restoration fees. The Historic Society of Old Newbury holds that PR, that preservation restriction. They had not reviewed the work that had been done and the work that was to be done. At the meeting, they agreed to meet with the architect and review the plans, and they were to write us a letter saying whether they thought it was sufficient. We don't have that. So, I am not bringing that up. Coupled with that is appropriation number eight, which is the exterior woodwork restoration, Phase Four.
Seven.
Seven?
Yeah.
Seven, seven.
Seven, sorry. And that same condition held, we don't have it, so we're not bringing that before you. So, appropriation two is Kelleher Gardens, $325,000. So, at this point, I'd ask the chair of the Preservation Committee if he'd like to make any comments in general.
Mr. DeSette?
If that's okay with the block.
I would just like to echo that portion of the mayor's report.
Mike, can you just speak into the mic, so if people are listening, they can hear you. Thank you.
I'd like to echo that portion of the mayor's report that presented the good news from Boston on the increase in stabilization of the Community Preservation Trust Fund at the state level, which has been in the process for over 15 years trying to get this legislation passed. And with a program that's a success breeds popularity, and popularity breeds success. And I think we have that. The net effect that I'd like to point out is that the increase in the registry fees, as the mayor pointed out, will generate an estimated additional $36 million for the state trust fund, and that will find its way to the 175 municipalities that have passed the CPA in their communities. An example of that, how it may affect Newburyport, we can make an estimate based upon what happened to us in 2018, which was that we got a match of $121,500 from the state, based upon what our local surcharge was. That was a 13.8% match. With the additional $36 million, when it is 100% in effect, which will be in the fiscal 2021, we will be looking at, if things stay the same as 2018, $290,000 in state match, or a 33% match, which is the level that the legislators were hoping to get to stabilize the fund at that type of match statewide that communities could count on. So, it looks like we have that, and that will be in addition to what can happen out of a surplus every year if the legislature identifies the CPA trust fund as receiving a portion of any identified surplus that they find is there in October. So, that could happen in addition, and it means good things for this city going forward.
Thanks. Thank you. Thank you. Counselor Tantar.
So, motion to approve appropriation two, Kelleher Gardens, $325,000.
Second. Second. Discussion.
The...
I'll just let you do all that. Go ahead.
The amount of the $325,000 was arrived at through a conceptual estimate. The manager stated that she was confident if there was an overage, that state funds would cover that gap. Secondly, residents of Kelleher Gardens were consulted about this project, and it was reported they're very much in favor and excited about it. Thirdly, they've decided that the look will be a consistent look. Some of the public housing has varied, so one different colors. They decided to go with one consistent color. We're told it's going to look very good. And it's going to be vinyl. It's replacing cedar. And that is based predominantly on cost. Again, three-zero recommendation. Devote favor. We had a motion to approve.
Did we have the motion first?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, you want me to run it from now?
Yeah, run the show on this one.
Oh, no, this is great. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Present. One present. I'd like to use the roll call.
No, it's a simple majority.
Motion to approve appropriation project three, Gateway Trees, $13,000.
Second.
Second. Yeah, just again, three-zero vote in committee to approve this. And we didn't have much debate. It was solidly supported by everyone. These are the Gateway Trees, of course, are on both Merrimack Street and High Street, are very visible as people come into the city. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes. So, I'm going to just report Cushing House Electrical System. We were waiting to get something written on the permanent preservation restriction before funds will be released. So, we're holding that in committee until we get that. We haven't received anything in writing. Motion to approve Bartlett Mall, $83,000. This was a two-one vote to recommend. The request was for $118,925. The Preservation Committee cut that down to $83,000. It's for walkway improvements in the Bartlett Mall to replace asphalt with permeable pavers. The pavers last about 12 years, and the POCS director said that even though the money is less, they would do as much as they could with the allocated funds, and would do it tastefully such that it wasn't abrupt end in any one place where it goes from asphalt to bricks. And the POCS director is here. If anyone has any questions. Again, two-one vote recommending approval out of committee.
Excuse me. Counselor Tantar, this is an odd process we've developed. Why don't I take it back and let you do it the way we normally do it? Counselor Azid.
I just wanted to...
My mistake.
Briefly, as a dissenting vote, my dissent has nothing to do with wanting or disliking the idea of repairing some of the trails at the Bartlett Mall. It actually is because, number one, I just don't feel like we should open another project but not be able to finish it. So, there are some other projects that are sort of waiting in the wings. Joppa Park, for example, did some nice brick for a portion of it, but waiting on the rest. And I know there's funding sources that we hope will come through for that. And it also represents my sort of uncertainty about the Fuller Field project, and whether that will need more, and as well as the rail trail, both of which are, you know, within the scope of CPA as well. So, that's the reason for my dissent, and so, that's it. Thanks.
Thank you, Counselor. Further discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor of that appropriation, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No. I hear one no. Counselor Tantar.
Again, custom house is next. We are not bringing that out until we receive something in writing. I know the Newburyport Historical Commission was supposed to meet and supposed to communicate to us what decision they made. We have received no communication. So, we'll hold that in committee and hopefully bring it out on September 9th. Motion to approve appropriation number eight, Open Space Reserve Fund, $100,000.
Second. Second. Discussion. Counselor Tantar.
Yeah, three-zero. This is a recommendation out of committee. The purpose of this is, of course, to add to the open space fund, so that fund's available if an opportunity arises, and this will replenish that fund.
Further discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Is there another?
Yes. I just want to note, again, the Fuller Field track renovation is being held in committee, awaiting the vote by the Community Preservation Committee on the debt service. Motion to approve appropriation number 10, the Riverfront Rail Trail Gap Project. It's $250,000.
And I believe I heard a second from Counselor Devlin?
Azid.
Azid. Azid. Discussion. Counselor Tantar.
This also is a three-zero recommendation to approve. The... There's already $230,500 that was approved and encumbered, and incumbent that's critical on this project. With that money, there's completed construction administration for Phase Two, completed the short-term stabilization of the riverbank, and also completed the interim detour. This is the area of the rail trail that was, we couldn't finish because of PCBs that were found there, and the funds that $230,000 was used to do what I just said. This additional money, with this additional money, the city will clean up the PCBs and will open up the rail trail informally. So, some of you may, the city applied for grants and was trying to use this as an opportunity to build up the rail trail behind the wastewater treatment plant. We didn't get those grants. However, the effort is ongoing. Jordy, if you have, if anyone has any further questions, Jordy's here and can answer them.
Further discussion. Counselor Azid.
As it is my ward, I just wanted to comment. I'm certainly in favor. As you know, I've been hoping we could get to the cleanup, and I think, you know, you probably remember some votes I lost perhaps along the way in furtherance of more design when this process was kind of halted. So, I'm very much in strong support of getting this cleaned up. I just want to echo what the Ward Four Counselor said, because it's probably one of the top questions I get. The intent at this point is to open it back up for, quote, "informal use", which just means the gates are no longer there. It's not paved. It's not completed. But as for many years, people did pass by there, that they would return to be able to do that. The other two things I wanted to say are that, you know, the overall cost of the cleanup, I think, is something that's been estimated, and we think we're on the money. And there's some other money that will be dedicated. So, there's this money, but there's also some brownfields money, I think in the amount of about $100,000, if my memory serves, and potentially some other sources. So, we did investigate in committee what happens if it, you know, costs more, as sometimes these cleanups do. But we were told that a lot of samples have been done, and so, our degree of confidence is higher than perhaps it normally would be. The last thing I will say, just to answer questions that I typically get, is, you know, in the mayor's update tonight, unfortunately, we learned that we didn't get a grant for the protection of the plant, which is separate but together with this, because they go together, and we're still hoping for the earmark. So, the future, the completion timeline, is still very much, I think, unknown, pending essentially funding. So, I get those questions a lot. So, I'm in support, and I'm really looking forward to getting it cleaned up. I think it's the right thing to do for the environment, and it'd be nice to return it back to informal use. Thank you.
Further discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Next.
Motion to approve collectively appropriations 11, 12, and 13.
Second. Moved in second. A discussion. Counselor Tantar.
11, the appropriation 11, 12, for bond payments previously encumbered with preservation funds, and 13 is the standard for administrative costs. We're three-zero out of committee, recommend that we approve.
Further discussion. Counselor Khan.
Yeah, thank you, Council President. I believe there was an amendment, though, to the total that was miscalculated. So, the total should be 147,620.
Oh, it was the three added wrong.
Yeah, so they just added wrong. I just wanted to, for the record, strike that total, and the new one is 147,620.
Is that a friendly amendment? Or just a scribbler's correction?
It's added wrong. Yeah, no, it's correction. I'll take it as a friendly amendment if we have to.
Okay, everyone has a chance. What we're voting on? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Very well.
Motion to remove Order 128.
Mr. President?
Please.
Just one...
Counselor Azid.
For myself, so 1, 4, 6, 7, and 9 remain, just so that we're all clear on what we're going to come back to that are still in, that will be handled. Is that what everybody else wrote down?
1, 4... Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Seven and nine.
1, 4, 6, 7, and 9, just so we're all together. Thank you.
Counselor Tantar, is there anything else in committee?
Yeah, motion to remove Order 128. No, it's already been removed. Motion to approve Order 128.
Second.
Moved in second. A discussion. On Order 128.
This is from the Community Preservation Committee. I think it was fiscal year 18 funding. The council put a restriction on it. This is for $75,000 for planning and design for the section that sort of begins Phase Three of the rail trail. Current rail trail ends on Parker, and there is nothing between where it ends and the rail trail begins in Phase One. This is design money to begin to design that portion of it. It runs through, starts in Newbury and runs into Newburyport, all right? And so, there has been some concern that maybe we should not fund this. The committee voted two to one to recommend approval. The argument being that, first of all, it's a relatively short piece that's in Newburyport. Part of the rail trail, Newbury, I'm sorry. There's a short piece of Phase Two, the currently finished rail trail that runs through Newbury and to Parker. There's another piece around the housing, that's around Heinz Way, I believe it's called. And as a condition of that construction, the contractor, the developer there, must put in a sidewalk. So, what the intent of the city is, is to plan and then complete the rail trail to connect to that portion. Otherwise, you're going to have a sidewalk there, and you're going to have a gap, and it would be a public safety issue, because people are going to have to walk, will be walking in the street without protection through that area. The reason that that has to be done is because the, if we don't have the contractor, the developer, do it now, the developer could get out of doing. It has to be done within a certain period of time, is our understanding. Right? So, therefore, again, two to one, we recommend that it passes. $75,000 for planning funds. And then, when the state, I guess, the mayor said earlier, the city, she's meeting with Mass DOT to work some more on the traffic circle area in Route One. So, if we can get this part ready to go, when that falls into place, we can close the loop, which is in the interest of Newburyport residents.
Further discussion. Counselor Azid.
Yeah, again, I was the dissenting vote on this. You know, there's a lot of arguments about whether you want to spend money in another community, and do you want to go to residents and tell them that we took money from you and we spent it somewhere else. But leaving those aside, if you just stay within the confines of the CPA, if you stay within the confines of the rail trail itself, there are so many unfinished other parts. I mean, as I just mentioned in the previous context, we've got a cleanup we're starting. We've got some grants that fell through. So, even if you just, because one of the arguments made in committee was, this is primarily for the benefit of Newburyport residents. Well, so is the rest of the trail. So, to spend money outside of Newburyport, even if there is a benefit for Newburyporters, doesn't make any sense to me. And it's not something that I would want to go and tell residents that if you're struggling with affordability in your home, or whatever the case might be, that we're taking your money and we're spending it elsewhere. There's plenty to do. I advocate, obviously, strongly for my ward, which I think, even though informal use is nice, we'd all like to see it be done, so it can be enjoyed, and that's probably going to cost a pretty penny. We have the connector across the waterfront, which, despite sometimes feeling like we're not making headway, I think we are moving in that direction. So, there's just other things, you know, even if you don't want to go outside of the rail trail or any other project, just staying within it. And for me, I just couldn't come around to supporting it. So, and I will say, my last piece is, I didn't get any sense from the community discussion that, you know, failure to pass this would mean that the person is off the hook for something they promised during the planning process. They do need to complete that. They do have, they did get a stipulation that says if they don't do, if the city doesn't help, you know, get them lined up by a certain time, then they're off the hook. But I heard no indication that failing to pass this would trigger that. That person needs to complete that. That was one of the conditions of their planning board approval, and I rely upon that. So, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Further discussion. Counselor Khan.
Thank you, Council President. I do support this, and part of it was looking a little bit back and trying to understand in terms of the intention of the rail trail and some of the past kind of aspects that have already been developed. And one of them was that in Phase Two, a portion of it did go through Newbury, and we did fund and pay for that, approximately 450 linear feet is already in Newbury, and that's completed. The piece that we're talking about now, which is a little less than 300 linear feet, is a much-needed connection between the Phase One and Phase Two. And in looking at the, going back to 2017, when the fiscal year 18 funds were approved, in looking at the documentation that was there, there was an intention to close the gap. Now, we recognize that there is this contingency placed on it, and I think, considering, I was not part of that discussion at the time, but in terms of what we have historically done, and in terms of like the public use, we just actually walk the trail all the time and end up using the side of the road to walk through. And I know a lot of residents end up being on the rail trail who are in Newburyport. So, I do think this is a good use of our $75,000, and I do think it was clearly stated in other bullet points of the use and intention behind it. And so, in this case, I will be supporting. Just to let people know, you know, we got approximately three miles of the rail trail, and this last Phase Three that's going to be completing it of that, we still have less than 5% that's in Newbury. So, when you look at the, you know, scheme of the trail and the portions that's in Newbury, there is this piece that's there, but it's a small piece. Lastly, I do want to mention, there is a memorandum of understanding that was done between Newburyport and Newbury in 2011. And in that MOU, there are some stipulations of joint working. There's nothing, I noticed, that specified financial responsibility from Newbury, but there was an agreement signed. The one thing I would propose is if we do believe there's a need for the Phase Three to sign another MOU, we could discuss that and see if there's a requirement or need for that.
Thank you. I'm not sure whose hand came up first. I'm going to ask Counselor Shan to speak.
So, I would like to ask, and Jordy, maybe you can answer this question. In the statements for updates and recommendations, it states that the council previously authorized land acquisition and funding for Phase Two of the Clipper City Rail Trail within the town of Newbury. Did we use CPA funds to buy land in Newbury for Phase Two?
This does go back 13 years, so I remember it. It's a little bit faded from that. I believe we used combination CPA funding to buy the land from Guilford Transportation V and M, as well as some state funding, some state grants.
All right. I guess my second question is, when we talk about, when we, as my counsel, my at-Large counsel friend here, said that we paid for it, was that paid for, as far as finishing the section that was within Newbury, was that paid for with state funds or was that paid for with CPA funds?
The elements of design and permitting, in addition to the land acquisition you were talking about before, that was paid for with CPA funds.
And then, my last question, you keep standing there. As far as the $75,000 for design work, I mean, since we don't have any inkling of what Mass DOT is going to come back with, does it make sense to start putting this kind of money into design work when we don't really know how the worst part of the rail trail, which is that section at State Street, is going to be accommodated? I mean, I appreciate that it's 300 feet. We think that's, you know, unsafe for folks to be walking on that dirt section. I mean, I run on it. It's not the greatest. But I mean, the worst part is by far trying to cross State Street at the bottom. So, I'm just questioning, why would we put more money into a design that we don't have any idea how we're going to connect? I mean, that's closing the loop right there.
Yeah, I guess there would have a true court answer to that. As the mayor indicated, we are going down this week to talk to District Four Mass DOT, the chief there, and the chief project engineer about their plans, Mass DOT's plans for the rotary. The city doesn't think that Mass DOT's plans for the rotary are particularly good or particularly safe, so we have some concerns there. We're going to try to advocate for a more expensive approach of redoing that intersection. As you say, we don't really know how that will come out, and it will be a couple of years at the minimum before anything significant happens there at the rotary. The city could decide that we need to sort of go our own way and figure out how to get across State Street, which is one of the danger points there. And through the... across State Street, which is one of the danger points there, and through the courthouse along the Parker Street right of way, and get people up, as people informally do now, through the Cherry Hill Medical Building and downhill street. You know, there are several different routes which have been under consideration for years. And we're getting to that point where we're going to have to make a decision about, do we wait and work with Mass DOT to get a more straightforward connection, or do we do something like I just described? So yes, that's a very complicated section there, and with the parties of Mass DOT involved, it's a long and complex process. The matter of the Heinz Way development has sort of been put into this mix because that is a piece that is ongoing now. The plans are being developed, it's a condition in their permit, and it's something that is on the horizon in terms of them completing plans and actually constructing that section of the trail along Parker Street. If we continue to wait and try, then we'll have people who will be informally using this area to close the loop. We'll have that little section, which is off-road, 10-foot wide pathway off the road, and then they'll pop back out and be back on the road for that last 300 feet. And so we feel like we need to work on what we can now. It's not really a sequential process where we have to work on one piece and then the next piece. We're working on everything at the same time. And the, at the time, is more right to work on that Newbury, town of Newbury, 300-feet section because that Heinz Way section between Heinz Way and the cemetery is in play and moving forward.
Further discussion. Counsel. Yeah, I oppose this, and I find it highly offensive, and I'll explain why. So actually, when Phase 2 came before us, I was on the council, and it did specifically come up, why are we paying for a segment that's going through Newbury? And at the time, the same project manager said, kind of as Donald Rumsfeld said when asked about inadequate equipment for the war in Afghanistan, "Well, you go to war with the army you have." And so the answer was, "It's too late, we couldn't get any money. I would have liked to got money out of Newbury, but too bad, the suckers who are taxpayers in Newbury, you pay for the whole thing." So we, when that came around for the next item, for Phase 3, we were hip to that. And so this council, and I haven't looked back at the vote, but I think it was unanimous, said, "We're not doing that this time, we're wise to you, so we're going to put in a condition that you cannot use our money, our taxpayers' money, for another town that has contributed nothing." It's not at all like, for example, the Custom House even, where they're undertaking a million-dollar project, and we're putting in 10 million, or West Newbury, where they're going to do a bridge, and they're going to take the lead because it's more important to them. We're expected yet again to cast away our fiduciary responsibility to our taxpayers to help out a town adjacent to us who has never contributed anything to Newbury Port. We had to sue them in the late 18th century, early 19th century, in order to clarify ownership of the land that was held in common. It goes back forever, nothing, not even a gesture from them. The idea that this is a public safety necessity is completely spurious. The man that was killed, was killed crossing at Kelly's Hardware in Newbury Port, in my ward, and I've been told to shut up about it again and again, that it doesn't matter, nothing to see there. And yet, here we are, ready to shell out $75,000 of money that we already said we didn't want to spend on Newbury, we wanted to prioritize on our own things, or be telling, "No, no, pay no attention to Kelly Hardware, pay no attention to that segment. We have to do this because it'll be unsafe. It'll be an isolated segment if Heinz Way is built and nothing else." What about the other direction? Heinz Way will still be isolated going west, you have to go across Shepherd's Autobody, there'll be nothing there in Newbury Port city limits, there'll be nothing at Kelly Hardware in city limits. Also, what did we just go through? We were just told, well, we, the CPA committee, the CPC, felt that they didn't have enough money to give to Bartlett Mall, so they cut them down a few thousand. They're going to get, you know, 86 or whatever it is. Where are our priorities? We can't take care of our own town common, but, you know, we're going to do this because we want to be nice to Newbury, or perhaps the developer on Heinz Lane, Heinz Way, so he can connect his sidewalk. It's just, it's offensive. It's not necessary. Where are our priorities? And it's a personal insult to me as the ward counselor. Thank you.
All right.
Counsel Devlin.
Yeah, I, well, I can't support this. I'm not even sure. I think this is sort of an adherence to, you know, over-adherence to form over substance where, who says we need a perfectly connected circular rail trail? I mean, most people are content even just on the old, the first phase, just to go from the, I just see people walking back and forth, or riding back and forth, that from the train station down to the water, they're not trying to complete laps. They're not saying, "Gosh, I really need to make sure that I go completely all around and don't have to walk off of a rail trail." And those that do, I mean, I ran that today before the city council meeting, and you've got State Street, but then you have this crazy thing where you have to run through the courthouse parking lot, Cherry Street parking lot, run along the side of the grass to get to the crosswalk at Hill Street. I mean, the bigger barriers, you're going to kill yourself on Route 1, and the $75,000 that we spend in Newbury is not going to help that. So I just, people are content, even if they had to do a horseshoe, they walked from one end all the way around to the other end, that will satisfy them. Same thing with down by the waterfront. I mean, I understand the desire to use that, I used to run through there myself until I found out about the chemicals, but I wouldn't mind walking off and having to walk that last phase if, you know, on the city sidewalk. So you get the nature of the Phase 1 and Phase 2, and then in the kind of interesting look into people's backyards, and then you walk down through one of the most historic places in Newbury Port on the sidewalk, looking at all the beautiful architecture facing the street. So I just can't support this, and I, how, who's going to plow it? Who's going to maintain it after? I mean, we bought, there's a little more sense to buying the terminus of the property in Newbury, and I'm not sure I was on the council for that, but there's a little more sense there than building basically a sidewalk. We can't even maintain our own sidewalks, we're going to build a sidewalk in Newbury. So I can't support this.
Further discussion. Counsel Khan.
Yeah, I am having a lot of trouble understanding the concern about spending money in Newbury. You know, I think it happens that to close the loop, we have to go through a little piece of Newbury, all right? I don't like Newbury Port, Newbury residents get a lot of benefit from that, all right? It would be one thing if we were building a link to their lower green and to connect to our rail trail, all right? And they were refusing to pay for it. But I got to tell you, if I were a selectman in Newbury, and I'm looking at this rail trail, and its final completion being a loop, all right, that is to the benefit of Newbury Port residents. It's to our benefit that that loop be closed. And it happens by necessity to go through a small piece of Newbury, all right? I support this expenditure because it benefits Newbury Port residents. We do this planning now, we will get through Route 1. Eventually, it will be closed, a closed loop, and will benefit our residents predominantly in this city. And that's why I support, I urge you to vote yes on this.
Thank you, Counsel. Counsel Vogel.
Thank you, Mr. President. I stand in support of spending the money and attempting to close the loop. I run this with regularity. Take Roth right from my house, head on down to Parker, battle Parker, and then, of course, take my life in my hands as I cross State Street. I hear from a lot of people who are on this trail, and I constantly get the question, "When's it going to be completed? When's it going to be completed? When's it going to be completed?" People are concerned about it being completed, they want it completed, and these are Newbury Port residents. I think we continue on, and we continue on. I think that it will be the impetus to get, to take it even further, get the State Street portion taken care of, and get the concerns out of the way. I stand in strong favor of it, and I hope you all will as well.
Thank you, Counsel. Counsel Z.
Yeah, I just want to ask a question for those who've risen in support. What is the answer to, what is the justification to spending this part here in Newbury versus spending on the part where we did have a fatality? I just want to understand the logic behind that, because that's a question I think is a fair one to ask. And that's one. And the second comment, maybe somebody can answer that for me, but the second thing is, this is design money again. So there is no time, there is no construction money. We did talk about this in committee. There's no committed construction money behind it. So when the design is complete, it will go into a holding period until such time when construction, so if anybody thinks that what we vote on tonight determines the ultimate timeline of the, or the fate, I should say, it's part of the timeline, but it doesn't mean that, you know, it's done or it's not done. But I'd really like to know the answer to, what would you tell a resident who said, "Why would you spend here when you could spend just on the other side of the same thing, and you're going to create the same scenario either way? You're going to have a portion of the trail that's incomplete." I'd like to know.
Counsel Khan.
Thank you, Council President. I think I could partially answer that. I mean, so I feel like we're confusing two separate type of issues within the phasing. And so, one, I mean, we have, and I think we've heard from Jordi here, about the whole overall project and what the scope is and what's going to be done in different pieces. So as someone, like I said, who does walk the whole thing, and someone who does cross over by the State Street, is, there is a way, as we are walking, and pedestrians are walking along Parker, there is a point where either your back is to people who are driving, and that does happen. If we don't cross to the other side, your back is to people who are coming, and you can't see them. And so, yeah, the solution is cross that street and try to jog or walk on the other side, but the pavement's uneven, and you can, you know, for walking or, it's dangerous. I just did this. So that is one of the reasons why $75,000 to connect to a sidewalk that's already being made in the Newbury Port area, they can't go further. So to connect that to me isn't a bad thing, it is a safety issue. Now, when you come, because I do this all the time, and cross State Street, you could actually walk a little bit along further up and cross while being able to see both sides and go across. It's not like my back is to a car that I don't see coming. I hate to say it, but I was actually at Kelly Hardware when that pedestrian got hit. So I was actually there and saw it, and it was not, so I totally understand how horrible that was, and I felt bad for the person, the young kid who was driving the truck that hit the pedestrian, but I definitely saw issues that happened there that could have been avoided, let me just say it that way. But in terms of the whole, what's more important than the other, public safety is important to all of us here, that's why we do this job. The $75,000 of allocation to do a piece of it that, to me, is also part of public safety, isn't one thing that we should have to choose here tonight between this or that. It's all important. But here's one piece that we did allocate two years ago, that I feel like is kind of right now constrained to be used on something that is needed. And like I said, I talked to residents, just like the counselor, other counselor at large stated, I have had people ask me who walk with me going, "Why is this not done?" So we hear from different people, and I hope no one's offended, but I do live in Ward 2, and that is something that other people there have expressed and asked me about that connection too. So not to keep going on, I will be supporting it, and I hope, I don't know if I satisfied your question, but I wanted to make sure I adjust my perspective.
Thank you, Counsel. I'm going to go around, Counsel argument again, please.
Yeah, the counselors have spoken in favor, keep talking about this is going to close the loop, it's going to close the, it's not going to close the loop. Counsel Z asked the right question, which is, why are you starting at an extreme end outside of any ward that is within the city of Newbury Port when you could start within the city of Newbury Port? The only person who answered the question, I think, directly is the last speaker at large, who said basically, "It's not so dangerous at State Street, just do this one, and it's more important." That's what I think I heard her say. So I disagree, I disagree. I think there are plenty of places where we could spend this money on a segment in Newbury without starting at the other end, and I volunteered to help work on that, as I did two years ago, when the man was killed, actually before he was killed, we were working on that project. So I guess I'm, I just don't agree with the premise that we have to start at this end, at the Newbury line. It's just arbitrary. Thank you.
Okay, I've got three hands up and going with Counsel Jumper, who hasn't spoken yet.
Thank you, Mr. President. I guess the big question here is, have we asked the town of Newbury for money, and what did they say?
Counsel, the committee did ask the mayor. She happened to be, she was in the committee meeting to ask the town of Newbury, she was informed by that the selectmen do not have any desire to contribute to that.
Okay. One other point I want to, one other point I'd like to make, Mr. President, is, I don't believe the gentleman that was hit on State Street and killed had anything to do with rail trail access at all. The circumstances of that accident had nothing to do with whether this rail trail was completed or not, so I just don't want that to continue to be a topic because I believe he was trying to cross a different way. I don't think he was walking the rail trail. So moving on, moving on for that. You know, when I think about us, you know, "Well, let's spend money in Newbury," I think in my head it says, "Again." Because this is what continues to happen, is we have interactions with neighboring cities, and we end up fitting the whole bill. I have no idea, this is design work, we're talking about $75,000, of why our neighboring city wouldn't want to give us some money to finish this portion. It certainly benefits people from Newbury also, because we don't check IDs on who's walking on the rail trail. And if it happens to be going through their town, I'm sure they'll take advantage of it. So it's really disappointing to hear that a neighboring town doesn't want to participate with this. And then, you know, I kind of look at, we did the capital improvement plan, and we basically said, well, we weren't going to pay for all of the Plummer Spring Bridge, which is 100% in Newbury Port, but we wanted West Newbury to contribute. So in this case, we're saying, well, we're going to do, we're going to complete the rail trail, but we're not going to have Newbury contribute. I just, I'm just trying to figure out, as a council, where are we at? Shouldn't we really be saying to Newbury, "No, no, we really need you to come up with some money on this, it's the right thing to do?" I mean, West Newbury is reacting on their side, trying to find money to come to fix the bridge. I'm just trying to figure out where we are as a council. Is that, so we're okay with fitting 100% of the bill on the other side of town? Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counsel. Counsel Tantore.
I wanted to give a shot at the Ward 1 counselor's question, but I may ask for help from the project manager on this. My understanding is, for this last area, the reason that we're not putting money around the traffic circle is because we're discussing that with the state, right? And the state, that's, it's a state highway, Route 1.
That's not.
And so, until we get clarity as to what the state is going to do, all right, we're not going to design that part because they're potty to that, right? Am I correct on that?
Mr. Vining.
Yeah, you are correct in that. I mean, we've held off on trying to spend money on survey or planning or design around that State Street-Parker Street intersection because it is essentially part of the rotary. It is where people are coming out northbound from the rotary and immediately hitting that intersection. It is not, that's not state jurisdiction there, that's city jurisdiction at Parker Street and State Street, but because of the physical characteristics of that area, it's intimately tied in with the rotary. So in talking with Mass DOT and discussing whether we should be moving forward with investing money in that intersection, which is a very complicated intersection, given Kelly True Values' use of the corner and parking, and sort of the lack of a defined corner there, the other side with the rental cars and the problems with Viewshed, they're... the other side with the rental cars and the problems with Viewshed, there's a lot of issues with, it's a complicated intersection to address. There are a number of scenarios on the table. If we are really not able to move things forward with Mass DOT, we could all, as a community, decide, we need to do something there, even if it's money that might, even if everything gets changed in the coming years, we need to invest in, perhaps at a minimum, putting in the rapid flashing beacons as a cheaper alternative to a pedestrian signal, and try to figure out how we rationalize those edges there. But we have held off, the short answer is that we have held off over the past couple of years because of this constant interaction with Mass DOT, as they've slowly moved towards paying attention to that rotary area, including this section. Their consultant looked at this intersection as part of their study area.
Follow-up question.
Yes, councillor Tantar.
So the idea, then, from my understanding, is we want this $75,000 to design this piece. So that's designed, when the state gets its act together and we agree what they're going to do with the Route 1 traffic circle, then we will have a complete design and we can close this loop. That's my understanding of what's at stake here. Secondly, I think if we're going to wait for Newbury Selectment to give us money to do that, it will never be closed. I'd predict that right now, right? And so, since the benefit to this, I'm going to say it again, falls predominantly on the residents of Newburyport and the South End in particular, all right? Because in train station, people can walk, keep, I have a nephew who skateboarded to the train to avoid paying for parking through the rail trail from the North End, all right? I think that's to the benefit of Newburyporters that we close that loop. And that's the difference with Plummer Spring Bridge. West Newbury needs that more than we do.
No. Councillor Argumet.
We need this more than Newbury.
Just to clarify.
I'm not going to allow the debate to be obfuscated by confusing Mass DOT jurisdiction over the rotary with Parker Street. I'll say it again. If you fund this going to the Newbury line, it does not even close the loop to State Street. I'll say it again. There is Shepherd's Auto Body. We could do that. There's the Kelly Hardware sidewalks, where he has curb cuts going to parking right now. That all could happen. And the linear distance, you can't tell me, is any shorter, really, than what we're doing here. So the idea that we, it's all dependent on Mass DOT is just not true.
Councillor Devlin, did you have your hand up?
Oh, I was praying that we could stop this. Be nice.
Wise man. Councillor Ziede.
Sorry to Joe, but I just, so I asked a question, I got a couple of responses, and I want to just say my, this is my last comment. There's no confusion about the phasing, respectfully. I mean, I think we understand that what the rail trail is, and ironically, Phase 2 isn't still, still isn't done. That's the one that's in my ward. So we've already moved on now. We're moving on to Phase 3. We haven't finished Phase 2. So we forget about where we've come from. I was on the council in 2017 when we applied this, this single sentence to limit. It wasn't controversial at all. I remember it, I can't say I remember the vote exactly, but my recollection, similar to the Ward 2 councillor, that it was unanimous, because it wasn't, you know, well, why would it be contentious? If the entire rest of the trail was done and there was 300 linear feet in Newbury, would we be having this debate? Perhaps not. So what I do think there is confusion on is how I view the council's role. Every time we spend a dollar, we are saying we want to spend it on this instead of that. And the reason is, as much as we wish we had unlimited money, we don't. So if we choose to spend $75,000 here, we are taking that away from something else. And I've tried to say that this money is specific to CPA. So I'm not even opening up to the Plummer Spring Bridge or anything outside of CPA. I'm even just talking about the rail trail. Finish the rail trail in my ward and finish Phase 2 if you're interested in doing things in order. And, or if you don't like that, the Ward 2 councillor's got an immediate need, I think, in State Street. And frankly, to the Ward 5 councillor, whether the gentleman was walking on the rail trail or not is irrelevant. It's an unsafe intersection. We're connecting the rail trail with the connection of the wastewater treatment plant, so what's the big deal with improving safety at a difficult intersection, whether it has to do directly with the rail trail or not? So again, if you pick this, you're saying no to other things, and because there's something that's literally just a stone's throw away on the other side, I think it's kind of unjustifiable.
Thank you, councillor.
And I will move the question.
Is there further question? Moved question. And anticipating a split vote on this matter, I'm going to order a roll call vote.
I had councillor Tantar moving for approval. The second was by...
Yeah, yeah. Second.
Thank you. Okay, so this is a motion approved order 128. Councillor Tantar.
Yes.
Councillor Vogel.
Yes.
Councillor Ziede.
No.
Councillor Devlin.
No.
Councillor Earls.
Present.
Councillor Argumet.
No.
Councillor Junta.
No.
Councillor Khan.
Yes.
Councillor O'Brien.
No.
Councillor Shan.
No.
Councillor Connell.
Yes.
Motion fails.
Well, is there anything else, councillor Tantar?
Yes, motion to remove appointment 114, second.
Moved and seconded. Discussion.
This is a...
I'm sorry. Did you say to remove?
He said approve.
Approve. I'm sorry. My hearing. I'll have to borrow a hearing. Go ahead.
This is to approve the reappointment of the treasurer, Julie Langueren. So a couple of things on that. The Budget Finance Committee does have a lot of interaction with the city treasurer, and we voted 3-0 to recommend to you that you reappoint her. She has been working for the city as treasurer since 2010, and was assistant treasurer before that time. She was involved in achieving, helping the finance director to achieve a triple-A bond rating for the city. She refinanced the city's debt, and then, as a result, decreased the debt service to the city. She increased our tax collection, so now that we are, we're collecting more than 99% of taxes when she became treasurer, that was not the case by a long shot. And finally, she has been elected for the second time to serve as president of the Eastern Massachusetts Treasurer Collector Association, indicating external valuation to her capacities. So I urge you to vote yes in reappointing Ms. Langueren.
Further discussion. Hearing none, we'll ask for a roll call on this matter.
Roll call on appointment 114. Councillor Tantar.
Yes.
Councillor Vogel.
Yes.
Councillor Ziede.
Yes.
Councillor Devlin.
Yes.
Councillor Earls.
Yes.
Councillor Argumet.
Yes.
Councillor Junta.
Yes.
Councillor Khan.
Yes.
Councillor O'Brien.
Yes.
Councillor Shan.
Yes.
Councillor Connell.
Yes.
A vote of...
I'm done, Mr. President.
That's it. Thank you, councillor. Education.
Nothing to report, sir.
General Government, nothing to report at this time.
I have a question, Mr. President.
Councillor Argumet.
General Government, the city solicitor ordinance is still in there?
Yes.
Wondering when you're expecting to have a hearing or bring it out?
As I communicated to you prior to the meeting tonight, it's my intention to hear this in committee before our next council meeting, so that we can bring it out on September night. License and permits.
Nothing to report.
Neighbor City Services.
Nothing to report.
Planning and development.
Motion to remove reappointment of David Vine to the Conservation Commission.
Appointment 111, is there a second?
Second.
Second, councillor O'Brien. Discussion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second. Discussion.
As required under the rules, we had a public hearing, no members of the public spoke. Mr. Vine did attend and made some remarks, and our committee recommended his approval 3-0.
Further discussion, councillor Ziede.
Just one second, I just want to thank David, because he's a regular attendee at the MRBA for Plum Island, and he's been very helpful on that, donating his expertise. So I wanted to publicly thank him for his efforts.
Further discussion.
Good for many years.
Hearing none, we'll take a roll call on this matter.
Appointment of 111, David Vine. Councillor Tantar.
Yes.
Councillor Vogel.
Yes.
Councillor Ziede.
Yes.
Councillor Devlin.
Yes.
Councillor Earls.
Yes.
Councillor Argumet.
Yes.
Councillor Junta.
Yes.
Councillor Khan.
Yes.
Councillor O'Brien.
Yes.
Councillor Shan.
Yes.
Councillor Connell.
Yes.
Anything else on planning and development, councillor? Not tonight. Thank you. Public safety.
Yes, motion to approve Communication 162 from June 24, 2019, Jeanie Geiger Walk Against Domestic Violence.
Moved and seconded. Discussion. Councillor Devlin.
This is like the 9,000th time they've done it. I spoke to them on the phone, they're running it exactly the same way, and it's good cause. We recommended 3 to 0 out of committee.
Thank you, councillor. Man a few words. Further discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Anything else in committee, councillor?
Motion to approve Communication 164, does that say A, from 7:15, 2019, Coast to Cure.
It says, second. Moved and seconded. Discussion. Councillor Devlin.
This is one of those that's starting someplace else and ending someplace else, and it just passes through here. The only portion that passes through here, if they've done this before and it's come through here, the only person, portion that comes through is the 100-mile ride, so they expect, you know, at most, two people riding together sporadically. So they, they said probably won't even notice that they were here. They've run it before, they've come through here before, and there's been no issues. It was recommended 3 to 0.
Thank you, councillor. Further discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Anything else?
Yes, motion to remove Communication 150, the Fifth Annual Harborside Half Marathon and 5K.
Second. Moved and seconded. Discussion.
Yes, I talked to Arlen Chafee, I've talked to him now three years in a row, as it indicates, it's the fifth year that they've done it. They did another race here, too. I think this just became a different name. So they, I think he said he'd been doing this for 10 years in Newburyport. To be consistent, we asked them to do what we had asked other bigger races to do, even though they go out through the industrial park, take a left on Hale, then go out through... They actually enjoy that the Plummer Spring Bridge is closed, because it makes it easier for them to run on it now. Then they go into Newbury and they come back. But we asked them, they put up signs that say, you know, for that part of Hale Street, about two weeks before, saying, "Road race coming through, here are the times." We've also asked them to paper the neighborhoods from the industrial park up to the reservoir, just letting people know that here are the race times. They're also going to put it in the ad, an ad in the paper, and put it on Facebook. That's basically the bigger complaints that we get from these races. Thank you to councillor O'Brien for these good ideas, and we recommended it 3 to 0.
Further discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's done.
All right. Now, motion to approve collectively, I'm going to try this, Communication 144, 145, 146, 147, and they're all chamber events that have been run before, so...
Second. Moved and seconded. Leave councillor O'Brien seconded. Yes, councillor.
I'm going to leave this out to councillor Junta. I was, I didn't get back in Boston in time to catch this one.
Right enough. Councillor Junta.
Thank you, sir. So yes, these are the annual chamber events, they've been run many times. They have all their sign-offs. They did come and speak with us at the meeting. All paperwork is in order, and they were all approved to the 0.
Further discussion. Councillor Ziede.
I just note that, at least in the packet, there's no insurance binders, so I'm assuming that they're on file, perhaps. I don't know if they got cut out of the packet, maybe, or whatever, but obviously, would say, just as a friendly contingent upon at least one covering all these events, valid for the, for the time period.
I get a nod from councillor Devlin.
I'll notice in the record.
Thank you. Further discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor of approving these collectively, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We're done.
And I just have a question for Larry, did we, or Shereef, did we do the restricted parking? I was also not here for that. So motion to approve Order 133 for the restricted parking on M Street, and I'm going to leave that up to Larry Junta as well.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Councillor O'Brien, you have to stand up first. Sorry, Larry. Councillor Junta.
I'll just give you the committee stuff real quick. There was, at least on the sheet that I had, there was a scribbler's error, it said Johnson instead of M Street. Maybe everybody else has corrected, but that was just one item. This did pass 2 to 0. And I will let the city, the ward councillor give us more description. Thank you.
Just to...
Councillor Ziede.
So M Street is on the basin side of Plum Island. This is an odd kind of thing, because at the end of, this parking order is designed to cover basically the end, where the pavement ends, and then it turns into a big sandy area. Plum Island, as you know, is largely no parking, and so this is basically making it consistent. Unfortunately, some folks have discovered this one magical place that you can park when everything else is basically no parking. And so at the residents' request, for which I have heard no opposition to, only support, I'm asking you to help me make this no parking, and it's at the end of the street. You can look at it on Google Earth if you want, the pavement ends, and you'll get kind of a big open space. And with your approval, DPS will put up a sign, which I talked about with residents as well, and that will be that.
So today.
For this season.
Further discussion.
Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Councillor Khan. Public Utilities. Nothing tonight, Mr. President. Rules Committee.
Nothing to report.
We're now going to go into executive session. I believe the clerk will read the purpose. Yes, the clerk reminds me of a good procedure, because we will not be coming out of executive session into public session again, so we're going to invert the last couple of items on our agenda and take up the good of the order at this time. So is there anything that someone would like to raise as a...
A point of order.
Yes.
Mr. President, a point of order. I have to recuse myself from number 17. And then, so I think we have to go in, I'd prefer even to really reverse the order, do 19, 18, and then I can, I think you need to come out of executive session, so that I 19, 18, and then I can, I think you need to come out of executive session so that I can recuse myself and go home. Before you do 17.
What's that?
You can do this first, this second, and this...
This first, this second, this third.
I'm sorry, yeah, exactly. And then this last because he wants to recuse himself from this.
Excuse me, Counselor, can you clarify? You want to recuse yourself from 17 and 18, is that correct?
No, I don't have any reason to recuse myself from 18, I don't think.
I misunderstood.
But I don't want to recuse myself for 17 and have it to come in order, then have to wait around for you guys to come up. You're going to have to bifurcate the executive session so I can...
I understand.
Okay.
And if you reverse it, I get to go home a little bit earlier.
You're going to go to no vote.
We get to vote no. No, I vote no. So, you're requesting that we take up 19, then 18, and then 17, in that order. Sensible. And that's what we should do. Does everyone understand what we're going to do? We'll take up the good of the order right now, then we'll take up the executive session for item 18 and continue the executive session for 17. I don't know if we have to come out and then come back in at that point?
We do.
We do? Okay, and that's what we'll do. Does that meet your needs?
It absolutely does, thank you.
Good, and that's what we'll do. Good of the order. Is there anyone who'd like to share anything with us tonight? Counselor Earls? Rich?
I'll see if I can get through this. Please, give me a minute. I'm sad and I regret to announce my resignation as City Counselor at large as of August 31st of this year. We recently sold our home of 23 years in the South End. Though we still have been living in the city, there's been some questions to where I have my residence at this point. In order to avoid controversy and to be a distraction to the important work you have to do in this council, I will resign as of the 31st. However, I would first like to thank the voters of Newbury Port, allowed me the honor of representing them since 2001. It has been truly a humbling experience and one I will always treasure. 18 years ago, I was urged to run for Ward 2 City Counselor, and since then, I've been treated with no less than respect and even kindness by advocates and detractors alike. I also want to thank the four mayors and the scores of city councilors that I've had the honor to work with. I learned so much from so many of you, and even faced with adversarial positions, there was always friendship, cordiality, and professionalism. And of course, I cannot forget the countless city employees that I've counted on, staff who've helped me along the way. In particular, the city clerk's office staff, who not only typically dropped everything to assist me, but more than once, saved me from myself. I can't even imagine a more efficient and capable or welcoming staff with which to work with. Finally, and certainly not least, I want to thank my family for putting up with my missed dinners, long nights away, and countless rants at the kitchen table. To put the time in perspective, my boys were just finishing the Brown School when I was first elected. Now, they are grown men, years out of college. I want to thank them, my whole family, for their patience and understanding to allow me to serve the city. In closing, I want to wish the council the best in the coming months as you face the critical decisions for our city. To all those running for office this fall, thank you for throwing your hat in the ring, and I wish you all the best. One of those boys who was in, actually just leaving the Brown School, he just had his first child, which makes me a granddad. Thank you for everything.
Yes, Greg.
Because of the sensitivity of executive session, and because my last day will be August 31st, unless there's a special meeting foretold, perhaps I should not be part of executive sessions. That's a decision the council may want to make.
That's your decision, Greg. I'm just remaining standing because, out of respect for Greg, there's something I'm going to read in a moment, but first, I want to offer my personal thanks to Greg. We've been on the council, well, he's been on the council longer than I have, and I have always found him to be knowledgeable, conscientious, scrupulously honest, and having worked with close to two dozen councilors, and I was trying to go through in anticipation of tonight's meeting, the names of all the people who have come and gone in the years that I've served, and certainly the years that he has served, where Counselor O'Brien has served. I can't identify another individual who has so consistently been a gentleman, who's been consistent to his values, and I think a great credit to his family, to his community, and I want to thank you personally, Greg.
Thank you.
So, I'm going to offer this resolution and hope that the council can act on it tonight or at least support it on straw ball, since we don't have a process for this. A resolution dated August 19, 2019, where as Counselor Gregory D. Earls commended his public service in 2000 by working on the Skate Park Committee, now that doesn't sound controversial now, but at the time, where as Counselor Earls was elected in November 2001 and served on the council from January 1, 2002, and has continued his unselfish commitment to the city of Newbury Port until this day. And where as Counselor Earls has served on the license and permits and the joint education committees for most of those years, serving as Chair of each committee at various times, and where as Counselor Earls has served on the Public Safety Committee for a number of years, and where as Counselor Earls has served on the ad hoc on the waterfront, and where as Counselor Earls established a strong working relationship with his fellow councilors and the clerk's office, establishing and maintaining this relationship, resulting in mutual access of a council and community, success of the council and community. Now, therefore, the City Council of the city of Newbury Port hereby formally resolves to congratulate and recognize the considerable achievements resulting from the years of hard work and dedication by Counselor Earls, and wishes him, in all future endeavors, the very best. Thank you, Counselor Gregory D. Earls. I'll ask for a ruling of the clerk who's acts as our parliamentarian if we have to accept a resignation or if we can put it up.
I would say, Fong, you cannot accept it, and he must serve until the end of the year. I'm sure you do. There you go.
Thank you.
Thank you. We want a motion to accept the resolution with an emergency?
Motion to come to that resolution.
With an emergency?
With an emergency.
And waiving all appropriate rules? Clear the way for Counselor Earls, get it all out of the way?
Every rule.
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded that we waive all appropriate rules for the purposes of accepting this resolution. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Tom?
Thank you.
Done.
Thank you.
Motion approved?
Oh, motion to approve. So moved. Suspended all the rules.
Okay.
So moved.
Second.
Wonderful.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None, obviously. Thank you.
Thank you so very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We're about to go into executive session, taking up two items. Item number 18 on our agenda first, item number 17 on our agenda second. So, we'll go into executive session now with a roll call vote after the clerk walks us through it.
I think we're supposed to state in public, Mr. President, that to discuss negotiations with personnel.
So, we're only going in for 18 right now?
We're only going in for 18. And that would be moved by...
So moved.
So moved by Counselor Earls. I apologize. Counselor Z?
Seconded.
Seconded by Counselor Devlin. And this takes a roll call vote.
Counselor Tantar?
Yes.
Counselor Vogel?
Yes.
Counselor Z?
Yes.
Counselor Devlin?
Yes.
Counselor Earls, are you in or no?
I don't feel right.
Okay, so Counselor Augman?
Yes.
Counselor Junta?
Yes.
Counselor Khan?
Yes.
Counselor O'Brien?
Yes.
Counselor Shan?
Yes.
Counselor Connell?
Yes.
We are 10, one absent, or two, one absent.
Okay, let's make sure our microphones are all defeated before we move further. This announcement is to the general public and the councilors and guests who are still here. We have just concluded our first of two executive sessions. I have two public announcements to make. One has to do with the previously announced resignation that becomes effective at the end of this month, August 2019, of Counselor Greg Earls. We are, under the charter, responsible for finding a replacement for the remainder of this term.